Okay.
There we go. Okay, no comments from the public. You have another chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, is there any? Any comments on the minutes?
I make a motion, the minutes be accepted as granted, second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills, are there any additions or dilutions?
We have one addition this evening, it's to sink slash Amazon. It's eight hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents, it's for books for the library.
I make a motion, we pay the bills as amended, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
We got a letter from Montgomery Hookos and Ladder Company. Dear Mayor and Trustees, we wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Cody Lamoy. Please act on this member and we thank you for your time in this matter.
Can I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the person, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, reports of Mayor and Trustees. We have an update on forty-three Chapman Street. The burned house that we're still trying to get taken care of.
Just the same as saying, I've been trying to get in contact with David. As I told the board, I contact him three days a week. Usually his mailbox is full, about once a month I am with him. I'm trying to get a hold of him now because the people up there that live next door, that tree is burned on the inside and they feel it's a hazard. I want to make sure he includes it in his claim, the insurance company to take that tree down. But outside of that, that's about all we can report of now.
Right, well, I also do have a letter from our attorney addressing, you know, wishing to get some feedback from him also, so our attorney did send him a letter and we haven't heard back from him yet, but as soon as we do, we'll keep the village informed. Update on the broken light ballers down at the dock, they have been fixed and thank you to the electric crew for fixing those. Update on the fire pits. Last meeting, we had a complaint about the fire pits and so we took, our administrator took and gave us copies of the City of Plattsburgh's open burning permits and the Village of Ross's Point's burning permits. And they look fairly similar, there's not a whole lot of difference. So I'm just going to authorize the code enforcement officer to start writing. If you see something, people are burning garbage or whatever, start issuing tickets.
You know, Dale, there was one thing on the Plattsburgh code that was in there and I didn't underline it and bring it down, but it seemed like there was one item on there. But we'll work with what we have now, because we got, we own with the heck's going on. But I'd like, there was one item that we'd like, it's in Plattsburgh, it's not in ours, it would stiffen things up a little bit. I'll get with the board next month and we'll get that. I also-
You want a copy of it?
I got everything now, I wanted to get everybody out. The only, one other thing about the code enforcement thing, there's a couple of things on our billing, it's not included. They have no set value on it, in other words, twenty-five bucks or whatever it would be. There's a couple of things that I'd like to update, and I'll get with Susan on this. And we're gonna bring a couple items that aren't on there that should be on there, and there's a couple of things that should be raised a little bit. And I think, you know, it hasn't been done in years and years and years. I'd like to get with, if it's okay with the board, to get with Susan and look this over, get a little better perspective as to what we're doing.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
So on the burn pits, even if you look at section E-
Of ours?
Of ours, Plattsburgh's. Well, it says pretty clearly that you have to be twenty-five feet from any structure or even twenty-five feet from the property line. I think that's gonna pretty much take care of a lot of problems.
Then they better be at least ten inches deep, I think that'll help out considerably too.
Right.
Because what they do is just throw four little stones in a pile and they start firing.
Because I know myself, and I'm sure-
And it does say in here that it should be a-
Ten inches by, but at least a depth, I mean.
I mean, I have, there's quite a few people that talk to me about this, they're worried about losing their little burn pits and they said they enjoy them and just because you have a couple that are not being controlled, they should, everybody shouldn't be penalized, so.
Right.
I kinda agree with that.
Yes.
I think we need to start-
Yeah, definitely, and nobody should be burning garbage in them.
No, definitely, definitely. And it should be in a safe manner.
But I think that having Sharon come down and of course Susan was involved in this last year, this smoke thing when everybody, especially like a daily, this ninety-degree heat and everybody's got their air conditioners on, if somebody complains, I'm just gonna have to go there and have them shut them down because we just can't have that.
Well, and if they're burning wood, you're not gonna get a lot of smoke anyway. If they're burning cardboard, it's gonna smoke, I mean, and that's, you know.
Someone burned more than that, I can tell you.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, if you're burning cardboard or garbage or whatever, it's gonna smoke. If you're burning wood, like you should be doing, you know, it should be, it should be very good, I mean, you shouldn't get smoke in somebody else's house, I mean, you shouldn't get a lot of smoke from burning wood.
The thing is, when I go to someone's home and tell them they have to shut down, and I just want the board to back me up on, because I know they're gonna call one of yous.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
That's all right.
If they're in violation, we support you a hundred percent.
Exactly.
Yep.
If they're burning something besides wood and you need to shut them down, then-
Yeah, I know, but even if they have a big smudge, you know, because wood, they burn wet wood and things like that, if we have to shut them down, we have to shut them down.
Yeah, no.
But I don't want someone that's got a bit of hazmat, something that has small kids.
If you have a complaint, then, you know, you have to deal with it.
We gotta get hard nose about it, we gotta get hard nose.
I know, but when I go there and I tell them what they have to do and then they're gonna call up Dale or Ring or Jed or somebody or Susan, you know, it's a...
No, no, we'll back you a hundred percent, that's for sure.
I'm glad to hear that.
If you're getting complaints, then, you know, there's something wrong.
Well, it's when I go there and I'm gonna call up so-and-so, or you call them.
Well, exactly, that's what you say. If you want, you say, here, I've got their number in my phone, I'll give it to you. You know, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
We're here to follow the laws.
This is a problem and we do have to address it, that's all.
Yeah, you have the backing of the board. Okay, I guess that's all I have for this evening. Trustee Arno?
I'd like to have, make a motion for two executive sessions. One on a particular person and the history, and the other on investigation.
So I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nothing else?
Uh, yes. I'd like to know how come that we got three or four streets that's been blocked off, half of the streets been blocked off and stuff. And from what I gather, the mayor said that we should take and to the street department, do some other work that's more important than fixing the streets. I think that's ridiculous.
Yeah, not if they got them blocked off, they should be concentrating on that.
Right. So instead of power washing the library and stuff like that.
Yeah, they should be fixing the streets if it's blocking one of them off, if they're-
Yeah, blocking half the street off, so it's like two or three streets in the village.
It's not good for fire protection or EMS service.
No, their street should be open, right.
Well, that's what we have a street program for, is to work on the streets.
So, and the other thing is the tree down here in Memorial Park, there's one tree down there that's almost split right in half. And it was supposed to be cut down a month ago. And the mayor talked to, I guess, no, the arborist. And he said that he'd come down for free, from what I gather now. And he would take care of it, but then there was a fee. They were gonna put a bolt through it or something or whatever. And I said, no, the best thing to do, I make a motion that we cut the tree down and plant another one when we get another tree.
Split.
Good split, I'll second that motion.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, what else I have here? I guess that's it for now.
Trustee Koki?
Okay, on the surplus property of Rabbitaway, I kinda hit a roadblock. I went and talked to the assessor and he doesn't think it's a good idea that we subdivide it because then you have to go through the zoning board and appeals and we have to do a lot of work. So I did talk to a real estate agent for advice, a friend of mine, and he said that because the property's not worth a lot of money, he also recommended that we sell the property in one chunk and let them subdivide it if they want to subdivide. So I'm just gonna table this until the next meeting, until our attorney is here, so we can go further and-
Is there one person that would buy it?
I think between the two people, they could buy it and then divide it and assess. And that's what, we're gonna try to-
Right, we sell it, we'll sell it.
Right, so they both recommended that we would have to get it appraised because legally, you can't sell it because you have to have the data to say that the property's worth what it's worth. You just can't take what it's assessed at, because it could be assessed with more, it could be assessed for... For what it's assessed at, it could be appraised with more or less. You have to have a legal appraiser appraising, that's what I wanted to ask our attorney, to make sure that we do everything legally, so nothing will come back and buy it, sell it. So we're gonna table until-
What's that?
I said, you want fair market value.
Yes, fair market value. That way legally, no one can come back and say, oh, you gave that property away. So that's where we're at with that. There's some people on Montgomery Street that talk to me about, they're worried about the sidewalk along the Delagard's fence is really close to the edge of the road. One place it's one foot and on the other, on the west side, it's like two feet away the sidewalk from the road and the traffic is really speeding through our village. I don't know what happened to our sheriff department. I don't see him in the village that much for speed control.
See him mostly, yep, coming in the village.
Yeah, so I guess what she, what this lady asked me about is if there was a way that we could put like another guard rail or something to protect the children that are on bicycles that are on that side of the road. So I met with the Public Works Supervisor and just to get his thoughts and views about it and, you know, one of the things we talked about was take the sidewalk out completely and use the other side, which neither one of us really agreed on that. But he did tell me, when they are gonna blacktop that road, he put in the budget to have it striped, the yellow line striped and the two white lines striped down east side. And with signage, hopefully we can control where the cars are going, rather than being radical. They'll stay between the lines hopefully. And he talked that if we have to, we could put ballards in a few places to protect the sidewalk and the people on the sidewalk. But it's just something to think about, so when we, you know, because people are concerned that their children's gonna get hit down here. Because if you've been down on Montgomery Street and cars, you're like, they're flying. I mean-
I mean, should we consider a speed bump at some point in time?
That's another thing we talked about, was maybe putting speed bumps down there. I mean, signage, something, I mean, we put the yellow flashing signs, but it seems like no one's paying attention to it.
Well, they did for a while, but now they're not anymore.
Well, I think they try to beat the traffic.
They try to beat the traffic off room two.
Right, and they speed through there, so, I mean, if they know that there's a speed bump or a couple of speed bumps, then maybe they won't be such a travel group.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just something to think about, so you can, you know-
Yeah, definitely, I mean-
Because they wanted to come to the board and address the board and, you know, and they'll probably be at the next meeting, so we'll at least have some thoughts on-
Right.
If we can think of something that we can do to keep the people safe down there, it'd be a good idea. The Stars and Stripes Celebration, as you can see, it's coming together. This is our big weekend, so they're out looking for volunteers to help, of course. We wanna keep this going through our village for the future, so it doesn't die out. Hopefully it's gonna get bigger and bigger each year.
We have the guards to help you, we're looking to get through somebody that might be able to help.
Probably so, I don't know. You can talk to the village administrator.
Um, we have the guards to help you, we're looking to get through somebody that might be able to turn on the lights first. Okay, that might, let me look into that. We're in the middle of a board meeting, so if I take a few minutes, I'll figure it out, thank you.
Yep.
It might be one of those that, like at the library, if it's not dark, the plug doesn't come on?
We'll look after, it's not one of those? Okay, well, we'll look after the meeting. So, just a reminder about the Stars and Stripes Celebration this weekend with the parade and the fireworks. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of people in the village. It seems like the garage sales went over very well, a lot of people in the village.
Yeah, it seemed, it was all-
The weather kinda held out, everything was good. I need an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, don't forget our chicken barbecue on Sunday.
Yes.
Yes, yes, with the chicken barbecue, with the parade, fireworks. So it's a whole weekend of events.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a Kids' Day on Saturday, there's a bike decorating contest.
I think that's here, right?
That's here at the Civic Center at ten o'clock, there's games, there's an ice cream social after, so. Bring your children down and enjoy the day. Plus we have a carnival this year. Yes, there is a carnival, I mean, it's a start.
A few rides.
Yeah, hopefully it's gonna, you know, this is gonna expand and bring people back to our village and put us, you know, put us in a good location where-
There's always good food.
Yeah, there's good food. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Koki. Other reports? Susan?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to update the board that we got our last check from the Dastney Grant and that was the one that was initiated back in twenty-seventeen, I think they began it, for the updates on the water plant, to keep the water plant going until we can get a new plant built. There was thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and change left in the grant after that and was, we were able to roll it over to put it towards the engineering costs for the new water plant. So we just got the last check and I will be closing that out this week. We got the EPG grant, waiting for the mayor to sign it so that we can start the process, working on that. That will be looking at more of our sewer I and I issue, the infiltration into the sewer, continuing what we have done already. We have a plan based on what was done already, this will add to it, cover a bigger area. And then we're gonna hold on to that plan and see if the infrastructure money does come out, if we can get a good chunk of the infrastructure money to cover that, then we have what they call a shovel-ready plan to go on that, so that's being taken care of. I talked with Trustee Arno last week a little bit about the issues around the Anchorage and how we don't seem to be getting any traction attempting to calm down what's happening there with the complaints and what have you. So I called Social Services and worked my way up the ladder. I've had conversations with two different people, waiting for a callback now from the Director or Assistant Director of Social Services, who runs this program, SRO, Single Resident Occupants, where they put people into rooms who are, need supposedly temporary housing. And I was speaking with them about the issues that the drinking outside, the loud music, there are dogs running around loose, there are kids running around in the parking lot at night and there's a concern that they might be hit by a car. People who live nearby have called the police and was even told by the police who showed up, don't get them agitated, there's only two of us. And so it's obviously just getting out of control. And John has been out there multiple times and has spoken with the owner of the Anchorage and that's not really producing any sort of results either. So I wanna ask the Director of Social Services, what is the contract? What is the contract for how many rooms? Is there a limit, because I know of at least one person who was placed there by Social Services and then invited his girlfriend and her kids to come stay with him and they were not in there, placed by Social Services. So is there some limit on who can be in the rooms? Is there some language about what needs to be done as far as pets being allowed in there? Noise and, you know, what's in there and where can we at least start the conversation that this is not working for the residents in Rouse's Point? And how do we get this modified if possible or cleaned up or do what we can with that? So I will continue working on that and bring it to the next meeting if I have an update.
So if there's, if there's a noise ordinance and there's a violation, our code officer could write you a ticket.
Right.
Now, does that ticket go to the owner or does it go to the person that is-
I don't know.
It'd be, I'm gonna assume it would be the owner, but then again, it's, unless you get an official complaint from one of the neighbors, a noise violation.
Well, yeah, if the owner has a bunch of complaints, tickets-
The thing is-
Social Services is-
I know that some of the locals, and the sheriff goes down there and I'll say, just like you said, mm. You know, that's a-
But if there is code violations, I don't know if it's a place to start, you know, to start writing these people up, to get their attention.
I spoke to Sammy about that the last time we had a conversation and, well, he said, you know, I can't control that, so, I don't know.
Well, he's responsible.
But it's his, it's his business, he's responsible, so.
Well, if he can't control it, then he should either have the people leave or write him a citation, one or the other.
Well, I, the thing is, when you're writing a citation, we pay the, we pay the fine. You don't want some of that, because he's gonna say this one was guilty, that one, I mean, this is, I think that she's got it right here, I called, I talked to a couple legislators, I did not call Social Services. I think that she's got a grip on this, but if she could get some kind of reply or some kind of guidelines from Social Services on this, on this SRO program, which is the first I've ever heard of the SRO program, but I know there's still been living there because the neighbors have complained and we have witnesses that say that they come for the bus in the morning and I, and that's, you know, that's what's going on.
Well, like I said, if you get a complaint from the neighbors and stuff like that and they write out a complaint, you could take and write up a violation on it.
Well, also, if you recall, Jed once said, I'm sorry, the mayor once said that he spoke with Sheriff Avro about getting reports to the board about how many calls the sheriff got in Rouse's Point. Perhaps we could ask him to check, you know, with the sheriff again and see if we can get a report on how many calls have been to the Anchorage?
Yeah, and we could bring that to Social Services.
Mostly responsive in New York State, please say hello, we can check to them too.
You know, as a starting point, some data.
Right, yeah, if we can bring that to Social Services and say, hey, listen, you know, this many complaints, we don't want it in our village, you know, can you put these people up somewhere else?
Yeah. I don't feel the village is, should be responsible for those people because those Social Services people are, have been sent down here, they didn't come voluntarily. Social Services paying their way, you know, we're trying, we're gonna try to get in the middle and we can raise the tickets and things like that, but that's not gonna cure the problem. What's gonna cure the problem is, I don't personally feel that they have a right to live in a motel permanently.
Right, yeah, there should be some kind of-
Well, we got into this a couple of years ago and, I don't know, we didn't, nothing materialized afterwards, so.
Well, I think it was all dropped and stuff like that, nobody ever pursued it.
Yeah, but we didn't drop it.
Like Susan pursued it right now and stuff, so. I think if we pursue it a little more, stuff like that, and she's going-
It sounds like we're going in the right direction anyway, so let's continue with that. See where we get.
Surely it must be a law where you can't have a residence in a hotel room that's listed as a hotel.
Yes, but like you said, they allowed some lady, some woman to go in there and stay there and now the children are living there also, and that's, but that's-
There should be a violation.
That is a violation, but it's Social Services, I mean, it's Social Services violation.
Right, well, to me, if they-
We'll just keep after it the best we can, but, you know, I don't feel this is fair to the neighbors at all.
No, no, and the guy that owns the place doesn't care, he's getting his rent and he's getting it from Social Services.
And well-paid also.
Yeah. Susan, is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Our Senator, anything?
I don't have anything to say.
John, anything else?
No, just a regular report, I'll have your monthly, by the end of the sixth month here, I'll bring you a report entry that I do for you guys. Anything, anybody that needs anything else, let me know before I bring it out and I'll include it.
Okay. Open the meeting to the public, anyone wishing to address the board at this time?
Scott Richner, sixteen Pratt Street. Just kinda to piggyback on the Montgomery Street issue, there's been kind of a buzz about the truck traffic on Maple Street. People have been asking and talking if maybe there could be more prominent signage for no trucks or local deliveries only or something like that.
Tractor, have you been tractor driven?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
So just, there was kind of a social media buzz of, I figured I'm here, I might as well bring it up.
Well, there used to be a sign on each end or each corner almost, or like a five, or a ten ton building.
It's just a small, like a eight by twelve sign maybe.
Yeah. I know years ago, there used to be signs on there like that.
Yeah.
I don't know if they took them out or-
People were talking about being a more prominent signage.
Yeah.
Can we look into that, Susan, see what we can get?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board this time? If not, um, Brian, you want?
Um, yeah, just on the, it's actually on the agenda about the building material for potentially water plant.
Okay.
I know that the engineers contacted myself and the Waste Water and Water Superintendent, they kinda need a decision before they can go any further with the planning.
Okay, um, I don't know, kinda, yeah.
We got, we got a thing on our box that says that we got a thing from Jason Ballard on the questions that we asked last meeting and stuff. So we all got a report on it right here.
Right.
Right, yes, I got a copy of that as well.
Yeah.
On the insulation qualities of each individual building type.
Yep.
I guess what's the board's choice? Typically, the art value is R thirty, or walls are R twenty-one.
I think they're looking for a decision if, I don't think, if you get this copy of the option one, two, three, or four, no, I was at the meeting, the special meeting that we had. They're looking at an option of using masonry walls, wood walls, metal structure. So like option four, the metal structure, like a building like this with a pretty flat roof, they pretty much said no, we're not, we don't wanna go down that route.
So our billards are too far apart.
The two options that they looked at were the wood stud options and the masonry. And I think that's what, option two was a complete flat roof, so we said no to option two. So it would be option one or option three. Option one is the masonry building and option three was the wood construction building. The difference is, is the estimated per square foot for the masonry building was three hundred dollars a square foot and for the wood structure building, it was two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
Well, was that figured with the price of lumber right now?
Yeah, right.
I mean, you're talking fifty dollars a square foot.
Depends what the building would cost if it was masonry.
Right.
So, this is what option three right here would cost, which is a masonry wall, three feet and then wood, the rest of the-
The rest of the-
So, they're just looking to finish the design plan on what to go forward. I know you talked tonight that you wanted to, you like wait till the mayor comes back and decide.
It isn't, I mean-
It's, you know.
Well, I think we should have a full board on that. What do you think? It's totally up to these guys.
I have no problem with the wood structure with the cement and the wood.
In your opinion, Brian, you talked to Danny today also, and what was your-
We both feel that wood would be an excellent building material, that there's no reason that it was-
So, it's locked up, like-
Up three feet up and then wood.
And then wood, yeah. Okay. I make a motion, we go with that.
I'll second that. So, motion presented to go with the option three of the, for the new water plant construction. Yep, and so, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Would you like me to contact Jason Ballard about that?
Sure.
That we have it?
Yeah, Brian. Yeah, thanks, Brian.
We'll do that.
I'll make the motion, we go into recess.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Exit stage left.
It's the only, it's the only exit we got, man.